Or put them on airplane mode or whatever. All right, and we will begin the meeting in about two minutes.
That was C, Forrest, we need to believe.
I think everybody can probably hear me without this.
Well, it won't be through on the internet.
That's got a good point. It needs to be here for the internet. All right, it is time to call the regular meeting of the Madison County Board of County Commissioners for March 12, 2019 to order. Let us all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. First, in reference to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item eight, see, their notes can be deleted, and then pursuant to the public comment, changes you all voted on in your special meeting, public comment would need to be moved to item eight.
All right.
Will be for one hour.
Correct. It will be for twenty, and at this point, we have eight individuals who have signed up to speak. All right, the Chair will move to amend the agenda.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amended agenda, please raise your right hand. All right. The next item is the approval of the February 12 special minutes and February 22 special minutes and February 26, easy for me to say, regular minutes that were submitted. Are there any suggestions or revisions, corrections?
Mr. Chair, having reviewed all three sets of minutes, I found them satisfactory, I move that we accept them as submitted.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as recommended, please raise your right hand. All right, we will move on now to... We have a resolution to change the regular meeting schedule and move the April 9, 2019 meeting to April the 2nd in order to allow for full attendance of commissioners, some of whom have scheduled conflicts. The Chair will move that we move the April meeting to April the 2nd from April the 9th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Mr. Hoffman. Come on down. Please make sure to speak into the microphone so that it goes out on the live stream.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lee Hoffman, I'm here representing the Richard L. Hoffman Foundation, and I'm here tonight to do a couple of things. One, to just update the board about the Bailey Mountain project, and second, to extend my thanks from the Richard Hoffman Foundation. As you all know, I'm sure by now, that we were able to close on the Smith Farm back in December, and it was about four years ago that I was here requesting a resolution of support from the county commission. So it's been a long, long road, but I wanted to come and thank you all for that support. When you're approaching foundations and state agencies and even individuals, having your county government support the project is a huge, a huge advantage. And, you know, you all have supported this project in lots of other ways. I think most everyone has given financially, you've come to fundraising events, you've supported the project publicly, many, many folks here in the audience have supported the project, so I want to thank everyone who had a part in this. Commissioner Weftal was very helpful to us in getting financial support from the Pigeon River Fund. So, you know, this, this kind of a project takes a lot of people to make it successful. For those of you who may not know, what we were able to do is purchase eighty-seven acres in Mars Hill on Forest Street, which actually connects to another 200 acres that was previously conserved. So now we have almost 300 acres of conservation area that's open to the public and available for hiking. The town of Mars Hill, the conditions of one of our grants was that the town of Mars Hill be the owner of that property, so the town owns this new acquisition. The other 200 acres is owned by the Richard Hoffman Foundation, and over the course of the next couple of years, we will be donating that property to the town. Hopefully, it's going to be able to serve as a match as they look for other funding sources to build trails and rehab some of the buildings on the property. So, again, thank you very much.
It's our pleasure.
This is a, it's a good example of private organization, public organization, state organizations, and even federal organizations in this case, working together to do something really good for the community. I want to especially say, and I was at the Mars Hill Town meeting last week, or last, yeah, it was last week. I, you know, none of this would have been possible if it weren't for the town of Mars Hill, and they're stepping forward to actually become the owners of this property and take on that risk of managing a large tract like this that the public is already very excited about and will continue to be, I'm sure. So, so, you know, our, our local government at all levels really made a big difference in this, in this project. So, and let me just add one other thing. The county commission was very helpful. Mr. Gill was extremely helpful to us at the very beginning, getting us in, and the Park and Rec Chair, the Park and Rec Director and that board were helpful in supporting the project. The Tourism Development Authority was very helpful to the Richard Hoffman Foundation and to the town in helping with funding, so it's really a very broad-based effort, and we're very appreciative of everybody's contributions, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well done. Dr. Ray.
Hello, I'm Kathy Ray, Director of Board Elections, and I also have with me, our Chair back here, Jerry Wallin, and we told you, I think, the last meeting, that we would be back in front of you as soon as we got step six, the approval from the North Carolina State Department of Elections to purchase the eighteen DS 200 paper ballot tabulators. And we did get that approval on February 21st, so we are in front of you tonight to request seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents to complete that Any questions?
Gentlemen, do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that our normal addendum that we add on to their contracts at all counties, that we add on to all of our county contracts being made a part of...
Okay.
Okay. And did you not see that in this contract?
Hmm, no idea. Unless it wasn't included in the package that I have.
Okay, it was included at the last meeting, the language that you had requested was requested be embedded in there?
Yes.
And the company did include it.
Yes, okay. Just as long as that is in there in the contract, then in the form of it would make it a good proposal.
Okay. So noted. All right, any discussion, gentlemen? Do we have a motion to approve the contract in the amount of seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents as recommended by Dr. Ray?
I don't have that motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Kathy.
With the initiation of this contract, I will be contacting the company to request that they come and pick up our old ipatronic equipment, so just so you know that that will be a part of this whole negotiation, to get them to come and get it. Forrest, you can have your building back, and we'll get that equipment out there, so we appreciate all of you so much. This has been a long journey. We started this in 2014.
Yes, we did.
Thank you so much.
Well, Kathy, thank you, and Wade, and the board. We have a very good election process here. You folks do a great job, and this is next step forward required to make sure we have the best equipment and do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
If I could have done it without all the support of you all, Board of Elections.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Ms. Brooks, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a couple of personnel items for you tonight. First up is in our Emergency Services Department. We have two vacancies for 911 telecommunicators. This position's vital to the public safety of Madison County, as there are, these are literally the folks who answer the phone when you call 911. It's a really tough job, and we're very, very lucky to have the highly-trained staff that we have. And tonight, on behalf of the interview team, I'm requesting to add two new members to that team, Cade Hooker, John Wadro, as 911 telecommunicators in the Emergency Services Department.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Brooke?
Second. I've got in the Solid Waste Department, a vacancy for a recycled truck driver and assistant, and this is for the flatbed truck that goes around and picks up recycling from the convenience centers and transfers it back to the landfill. And so, tonight, I'm requesting on behalf of the interview team that Luther Roberts be approved to fill the position of recycled truck driver and assistant in the Solid Waste Department.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Forrest.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in front of you your financial report through February 28. Finance Officer had a funeral out of town that she is attending today, so she did prepare this report, which you can see, the total of all accounts, sixty-seven percent of the way through the year, unassigned and restricted, in the general fund, unassigned and unrestricted total of four million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Landfill fund of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty cents. 911 and two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars in that money in each of those cases, especially the general fund, will have to, along with money that continues to come in, get us through the rest of the year, and then we can continue to build for the long term of that. The next page shows your general fund, landfill, and 911 revenues and expenditures to date. Again, we're sixty-six point seven percent of the way through the year as of the end of February. Our expenditure, our revenues are at sixty-five point six five percent. It's a little behind, but we have sales tax that comes to come in three months after the close of fiscal year. So even though it has, it's collected, but it has to go to Raleigh and be divvied up to the local governments. So we're on target there. Expenditures are below target, significantly below target, at sixty point zero, sixty percent. So that is a good place to be. Looking through the general fund, revenues and expenditures on the next page, we don't have any depart, we have just a few departments that are right at their target, fewer above. We understand why those are, and they've had bigger purchases earlier in the year. All the other departments are well below where they should be at this point in the year on expenditures. Revenue-wise, our vehicle tax is coming in a little higher than it was last year. Our sales tax, what we have so far this year, is two hundred and forty thousand dollars higher than it was at this point last year, so that's good. Property tax for current year is just a little bit lower than it was at this point last year. That could depend on calendar, a number of things, so we're going to continue to watch that, and as notices, second notices go out for those payments, we hope to see that number, and tax office will work hard to see that number increase. But we're in a pretty good place at that point, and landfill revenues are at seventy-nine percent, and expenditures, expenditures are at sixty-three percent. Are there any questions about the financial report?
No.
Next, you have Budget Amendment Number 11. Just to explain it, there, the first section, there've been a couple of years on prior year's taxes that came in a little over, and a couple that came in a little under on actuals. So we're, our bottom line on prior year's taxes is staying the same, the numbers are just being moved to different years because of actual collections. We guess at that every year, we know that we want to get five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from prior year's taxes. We don't know what portion of that's going to come from 2013, and what portions will come from 2017, so we have to adjust that as the year goes on. You see, just as you just approved the Budget Amendment for capital equipment in the elections budget, and then at the animal shelter, they have received a seventy-five hundred dollar grant from Petco, paid for spay, moving bear, very good for our county, can actually pay for any effort to make our shelter animals more adoptable. So I think that's another really good sign of our animal shelter being operated by Angela Davis and her staff. Our, our live release rate is, is well above, I believe, ninety-five percent. For a county our size with the resources we have, they're doing a phenomenal job with that, and it's through getting these grants that they're able to do that. Soil and water budget amendment is there, they have a note, that's, that's not the general fund, that's their avid watershed fund, and it's just moving over money that's carried forward from their fund balance to use on projects that are needed right now. And the transfer from fund balance is for the voting equipment. You all had saved, been saving that money since 2014, and now for capital outlay, so to pull that out, be able to spend it. That's your Budget Amendment Number 11. Any questions about the financial?
Right. Gentlemen, any questions? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment 11 dated 12 March of 19.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Budget Amendment 11, please raise your right hand. Forrest.
Couple of updates with the county, one, a couple of exciting things, but we've had some new employees join us or go into different roles in the past few months, and really pleased to welcome Terry Bellamy as our Director of Community and Economic Development. Terry started on Monday, and has been spending, she's already very aware of the county and learning how we operate and some of the issues that face us, spent years on the City Council and as Mayor of Asheville, and served on the Land of Sky Regional Council Board during that time. In addition to the local government experience, the Land of Sky Council of Governments is Madison, Buncombe, Henderson, and Transylvania Counties, all those counties plus all their municipalities getting together, learning about each other's issues, and really emphasizing the fact that we're a region and what's going on in one county which is an impact in the others. So Terry is familiar with the importance of Madison County and the region. Very excited to have you on board with us and that background, and it's going to be important for Madison County, so. The Emergency Services Position aboard Caleb Dispenza, who has been the 911 Supervisor and is interim Emergency Services Director, is in the role of Emergency Services Director, where he will be over 911 and be supervising the Emergency Management Coordinator, but the Emergency Management Coordinator will be Louis Roberts, who will start April 1st. Louis is currently Patrol Deputy with Sheriff's Office, has been dispatch and detention there, has been active with Laurel Fire Department since he was sixteen or seventeen years old, is going to do really well of working in the field with those folks. He will be doing a job that the Emergency Management Coordinator has done historically in the county, of working with those volunteer fire departments to deliver some of the emergency services that we have in the county. He will also be working with Caleb on some of the bigger grants and things like that, long-term planning and those sorts of things. So by getting those two together, we think we have improved our redundancy there and helped to build a good team there. They're, they're very fortunate to have both of them, and Caleb's already working in his role, and Louis will be coming on at the beginning of April. Sad to report that Philip Presnel, our IT Director, has, who's been with us for six years, had another opportunity next door, and he has moved on, we will be working to fill that position, but I can say enough about the work that Phil did while he was here, updating our IT department, building a new website, he and his staff. By not contracting that out, it saved us fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, and when you look at our website, it's a tremendous improvement overall. It was a major undertaking for them. Last month, he was here with a phone purchase, changed us over and saved us tens of thousands of dollars every year, really good long-term thinking, where he's definitely left us in a better place for this time being with us, and it's a constant thought with us. The town of Hot Springs received a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Environmental Quality to upgrade their water system. That is a, you know, good, very good grant for them. There were only eight hundred and, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars were totaled in the announcement package, so for Hot Springs to get that much, and then I think there were three or four other towns who had smaller grants who ate up for the remainder of that. Very good news for them. So those are some of the highlights of major things that have been going on. Any questions? No? Next, you have surplus property, and a lead that I've got up here with Al. Right now. This is a trunk in a borry. Okay. Don't hand me that after. That's my spirit, that's my book there. All right. You have Ivy Way Lot 1, Lot 201, Little Laurel Estates, it's an acre. We are paying HOA fees for seven hundred and ninety-two dollars a year there. We approved a bid on February 12. The upset period ended on March 9, and no other bids were received. That bid that you accepted, that meeting was five hundred dollars, you can vote to either accept, deny, or counter that offer, for us to move forward with that.
Gentlemen, what a pleasure for the board.
You guys interested in counteroffer?
I see no harm in that.
I am.
Yes.
I'm interested.
All right, give us a figure.
Twenty-seven thousand. I'm being sarcastic. That'd be nice. How about fifteen hundred?
We have a suggestion, fifteen hundred. Do you wish to make that a motion?
Sure.
We have a motion to counter with fifteen hundred. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of countering with fifteen hundred, please raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. All right, we are now moved to public comment. And again, I will do my best not to mispronounce people's names, so please excuse me if I do.
Just have them state their name.
And please state your name when you come up, all right? And our first individual is Peter. I do need to remind again that the rule of three minutes does apply. Forrest will be keeping the three minutes and will...
Who's on deck?
And we need, it would appear to be Andy Carlson. Yes, and if you would go ahead and queue up right behind Peter, this will help us move forward, if you don't mind. All right.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm going to be talking about planning documents. Madison County has created and paid for three major planning documents that are intended to guide the commissioners and their agents as to what is appropriate for Madison County. The comprehensive plan, which took a snapshot of the community, and then in consultation with the community itself, developed the plan, which it was paid for and approved by Madison County. The balance of the statements will promulgate with the comments taken from the comprehensive plan, especially the section for economic development, and they're here. Good afternoon, good evening. A term that has become popular describing this type of economic development is called asset-based development, building economic development strategies on an area's assets and strengths. Madison County has many assets and strengths. The county maintain, main assets are its people, communities, natural resources, scenic beauty, farms, farmland and rural char, character, cultural heritage, high-quality educational institutions, and peace and quiet found in a multitude of remote locations. The county's strengths that were identified were strategic location, wealth of natural resources, and outdoor recreation opportunities, strong agricultural economy and knowledge base, strong tourism business, reliable workforce, and relatively large numbers of artists and artisans. What is apparent is that the placement of an asphalt plant in this county is a significant variance with the planning documents that the county has developed. And I just think it's real important that when a county has major planning documents, that they be used with regularity, that they be studied, and that the fact that they exist represents a vision statement of where we said we were going to go. And the comprehensive plan provides for a serious vision statement that is primarily rural and pastoral, and I think it is critical that we stick to that plan. Thank you.
Andy, as you come up, would Janie please step in to the queue? And don't, please remember to state your name each time. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Andy Carlson. Thank you for having us, giving us the opportunity to talk. After I retired in August 2015 for my 24 years of serving the United States Navy, my wife and I traveled for almost a year searching for a perfect... wife and I traveled for almost a year searching for a perfect place to live. After traversing 43 states, we found Marshall and we were home. I won't take time explaining that the asphalt plant will not bring as many jobs to the areas being claimed and that the fumes in the particular matter are not as benign as the proponents would have you believe. To the contrary, scientific studies show that an asphalt plant's toxic fumes adversely impact everyone. I won't go into detail how downtown Marshall is once again thriving with new local businesses and surging tourism that is funneling close to $2 million of annual tax revenue to the county, many times more tax revenue than can be expected from an asphalt plant. This tax revenue will continue to grow unless this asphalt plant is allowed to be constructed and drive tourists away. I won't even get into the loss of property values and the resulting property tax losses to the county. The site of the proposed asphalt plant is a stone's throw away, that is less than a quarter of a mile away in some cases, from a large number of people considered to be a vulnerable population. For example, the young need fresh air and the ability to play outdoors, outdoors to grow strong and healthy, that are nearby at the Madison County Child Development Center and the county ballfields and fairgrounds. And the elderly who are susceptible to the ill effects of pollution, even at what some people claim are acceptable levels, live at the Elderberry Nursing Home just down the road. And the sick and the firm who cannot tolerate even the additional health stresses posed. I am considered one of the sick and the infirm. I have chronic leukemia, I have a susceptibility to lung infections, and I have recently suffered a stroke. Many other young, sick, infirm, and elderly people live within the one or two mile zone of impact from this plant. They will be put at significant risk if you were to authorize this plant be built. I am here on behalf of all those people that don't have the means to speak out. It is one thing to consider the economic ramifications of this decision, but an altogether more compassionate thing to take to heart the health and well-being of our loved ones, young, sick, infirm, and elderly. I ask you to take care of people that need your help the most. Thank you.
Thank you. And please make sure to give us your name. And Liz, if you would come into the queue. Thank you.
Honorable Commissioners, County Attorney, County Manager, my name is Jeannie Bluffin, I'm a fellow resident of Madison County. My husband Chuck and I live on top of the Recticorps Community overlooking the quarry. We have a 25-acre farm, we have agritourism, we have a vineyard, we have sustainable agriculture, we won't even put a treated wood post in the ground. Our neighbors just down the road have a farm camp for children in the summer. All of our neighbors moved there because of the beautiful views and the peace and quiet we wanted to live in the country. We knew the quarry was there when we moved there, so we put up with the noise and the dust, but we're not prepared to even consider something as awful as an asphalt plant. You've all been behind the trucks when they're laying asphalt, you know what it smells like. It was my understanding on Saturday night that the Board of Adjustments isn't even going to take into consideration anything the rest of us care about. They don't care what we think or what we want, all they care is whether or not this permit application satisfies some requirements that are in the statutes or the ordinances. I don't know if that's true, but if it is, there's something wrong with this picture because this county belongs to the people who live here and the people who visit here. It was my understanding tonight that you were only going to allow one person to speak, so obviously I didn't come prepared to speak, but this is so important to me that I feel it's absolutely critical that the people of this county's health, safety, welfare, and livelihoods be taken into consideration when what we're looking at is an operation that's going to benefit basically one family and their employees, and there are not very many of those. If it were benefiting a lot of people, I might, even then, I wouldn't feel differently about the asphalt plant, but at least there'd be an excuse for permitting it. So I'm asking you, on behalf of all of the people, not just the people who live where I live, but all the people in this county who are obviously opposed to this, to consider our welfare and our wishes as our elected officials, we are asking you to take into consideration what we truly want and what we believe and to help us keep this county as beautiful as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Liz, would you please introduce yourself? And Paul, if you would come into the queue. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Liz Gollum. I am prepared to speak about traffic in the county because we were told we could not speak about the asphalt plant. And so I do want to speak to you about traffic safety because I lived through the detour of the I-40 rockslide. Many of you also obviously survived. That was a terrifying experience for many of us who live and drive these roads on a regular basis. As many of you are aware, 53-foot trucks are not allowed on Highway 2570, and they're certainly not allowed on Highway 208. And they continue to be a problem on Highway 208. It's a very narrow road despite our recent widening by Michelle Presnell. The nine inches in the lane that I'm in are really not enough to keep me from being run over by a tractor trailer that is in the opposing lane. And so I have friends that drove from Laurel to Hot Springs and passed 23 53-foot trucks during the detour. I have another friend that drove from Mars Hill and passed 32 53-foot trucks between there and Hot Springs. The highway patrol really did not participate until about day three or four, we started to see some highway patrol. I called Monday morning to the Asheville Office of the DOT, and they assured me that they were putting up signs in the county, which there were a few. But honestly, when I saw a tractor trailer go down Sharp Hollow and try to go over troublesome gap to get to Highway 209, it's a big problem. And if this is going to happen on a regular basis, because we are designated as a detour for I-40 when there's a rockslide, and one of my biggest concerns is the asphalt plant is projecting 100 trucks a day, 108 to 10 per hour, 100 trucks per day passing through that intersection at McCrory, at the McCrory entrance. Those are slow-moving asphalt trucks. The trucks, the 53-foot trucks that were driving on 2570, were driving it like they were on I-40, and they were going 75 miles an hour past our Ingles and past McCrory. And I hate to even say this out loud, but is this only going to change when one of our school buses is involved in a 53-foot truck accident? Something has to be done. We need help with this. And this isn't just when there's an I-40 detour. The 53-foot trucks are rampant and they are daily, they're hourly, going on our roads, and they're causing damage. I mean, we just had a truck overturn on 2570, and in order to get that truck back up, they had to put that jack and that crane in the road, and there are now five huge divots in the brand-new asphalt that we just got laid on the switchbacks. Also, right where you turn into Marshall, downtown Marshall, that spot on 2570 is always a problem where water comes out and it erodes. That spot has been decimated. I watched it happen, truck after truck went over. And so someone has to offer us some kind of help or some kind of relief. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Paul, please make sure to introduce yourself. And Anne, please come to the queue.
My name is Paul Gurwitz. Can everybody hear me? I'm going to revise my remarks. I gave you a copy of them because one of the issues, the first issue I wanted to address was the public comment period, and you have begun to deal with that tonight, and I urge you in the future to not limit the, as little as you can, the amount of time given to the public to speak. We elect public officials and entrust them with, you know, making decisions, but there are times when you need to listen to the public. And the whole notion of sides is a little troublesome to me also, the notion that we would get a speaker from one side. There are issues with many sides, and I think we need to remember that and encourage everybody to come to meetings like this. And one of the, just an aside, if the, if the public comment period is burdensome on your official meetings, I would urge you to have more public meetings with you in attendance where we can have more of a discussion and we're not constrained by time. That brings me to the second issue, which is the proposed asphalt plant. My understanding is that the decision on whether to allow its construction is in the hand of the Boards of Adjustment, which you appointed. There are serious concerns in this community that the existing zoning laws are inadequate, and they fail to allow consideration of many environmental concerns. I also believe this board was asked to consider revisiting that ordinance, those ordinances, and considering adopting more comprehensive criteria that reflect the changing understanding of dangerous environmental problems and the growing concern of citizens over environmental quality. I believe you were also asked to implement a temporary moratorium on conditions for this to allow time for further discussion on these concerns. And I believe you have chosen not to take either of those actions, but instead to allow the decision on the construction of the plant to be made by the Board of Adjustment under the existing laws. That's unfortunate. There is no more important issue facing our country or our county than the condition of the environment. I think if you were to try and find the worst site in the county for the plant, it's already been done. It is the worst for the reasons that everybody's talking about. By allowing this plant to be built, we're betting our county's environmental future. For what? A few jobs, some tax money, and I appreciate that this is your livelihood, but there are other people in this county whose livelihoods are also affected. The owners of the plant may convince the Board of Adjustment that they meet the existing requirements for a permit, but the reality is that enforcement of even the existing minimal regulations has been spotty at best. We need to do better, and you need to do better. For the sake of our children and the future of our county, I urge you to take a stand in support of stricter zoning requirements and begin a dialogue with the citizens on the county's future. I also ask that you revise the rules of public comment at your meetings to allow them input of the greatest number of citizens possible. Thanks.
Anne, you're up. Please make sure to introduce yourself. And Veronica, if you would come into the next spot. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Harold. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have an office building for a real estate company on the back house, which is 1.8 miles from the proposed asphalt plant. And I'm truly concerned about the health issues here for myself, the people that come in and out of my office, and all the people surrounding this potential site that would be impacted by this. But I just want to, for a moment, speak about real estate values. And I wasn't prepared to speak, so I'll just follow these notes here. I'd like to say that we have already seen how just the possibility of this asphalt plant can impact real estate values, because as you might imagine, I'm contacted frequently by potential buyers who are interested in moving to Marshall. Marshall is on the map now. It has, it has, it has and is continuing to grow. And so as I speak to people who are interested in potentially buying property in and around the south end of Marshall, I feel obligated ethically to tell them that we are up against this asphalt plant, that the community is fighting this. I ethically could not do anything better than that. And for the most part, they say, well, you know what, we're going to table our search, we're going to wait and see what happens. What that says to me is that they're not willing to locate in a community where they're going to be faced with dirty industry and the potential of what that means for their health and their real estate values. Most people who own real estate, their homes represent the greatest amount of wealth that they might ever have. And I'm not talking about rich people, I'm talking about middle-class people, working people. The equity that they have in their homes, in many cases, represents, to a large degree, their actual wealth and what they have. And this allows them to maneuver into retirement, into buying a larger home for their family, into downsizing, buying a retirement home. And, and so the people that live in close proximity to this asphalt plant, and some of them are on the core group, Doug Bruggerman, Emily Sontag, Veronica Gentry, Dr. Feldman, and others, I can say with certainty that their real estate values will be negatively impacted. I can't, I can't measure that. I don't know exactly how much. I know that Doug Bruggerman has given some numbers that are in the 20% range. I'm going to say it's probably more than that, because for people who live next to an asphalt plant, I don't think they can give their property away. I don't know of anybody that would want to live there. In terms of people who currently own real estate next to the plant, and they want, they decide they want to sell it, they have to fill out a residential property disclosure statement. There's a question, I believe it's number 25, number 26. And I would have brought this tonight to you. It asks about odors, noise, and impact from surrounding areas. They will have to answer this question on a disclosure statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica, again, please introduce yourself. And would Nancy please step into the queue? Veronica?
All right. I'm Veronica Gentry. I appreciate this opportunity.
Your honor.
Yep.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak tonight. As I've shared before, I'm very much opposed to the asphalt plant. It's about three-quarters of a mile away from my home and about two miles away from where I work. That being said, I feel compelled to read part of a letter I've been working on to the editor that addresses something that I've, I'd like to combat in the community. So, "Wake up and smell the asphalt," said no one ever. "We can all agree that asphalt stinks. Unfortunately, that phrase could be an unpleasant reality for some should an asphalt plant come here to our home, Madison County. I've lived in Madison County almost my entire life. My family on both my mom and dad's sides are native to Madison County. Madison County is my home and where I plan to raise my kids. However, where you're from doesn't necessarily have anything to do with where you call home. Native or not, the truth is, we're all here and choose to stay here because we love Madison County. We're here for long-range mountain views, summers on the river, fall afternoons surrounded by hues of yellow and orange, and barns covered with the season's first snow." It's a little sleepy and slightly reminiscent of a simpler time. We can all agree on the many reasons, I don't know what's happening right now, why we love to live and work in Madison County. Whether Madison County has been your home for three years or 300 years, Madison County residents, both native and new, have a say in the proposed asphalt plant. Thank you.
Nancy, and please introduce yourself.
And I'm supposed to follow that? My name is Nancy Larkin. I'm here to represent partially a group called Madison Indivisible. We are a group that is representing over 6,000 affiliates across the country. We are 300, over 300 strong in Madison County. We are a resistance group that we stand for the betterment of our country and certainly the betterment of our county. I not only represent Madison Indivisible, and I've come, you all have received a letter from me, and if you, the rest of you who did not receive that letter, because I don't know you all by name, but if you would read the letter, the paper today, there's a letter to the editor that speaks from the heart of the logistics. What I wanted to do today is to speak from my heart. There really are no words to describe how I feel, and I also want to say thank you to the county commissioners today for hearing the concerns of us who felt strongly against the policy of only hearing, as Paul said, from the sides. There are not just the sides, and there is no getting over this and getting it off our chests or whatever the words were today. This is not something we're going to get over. This is too crucial to our hearts. This is too crucial to our hearts. This is our county. I come from Michigan. I come from Detroit. I don't live in Detroit. I live in the county of Madison. I am proud to be a Madison County resident. I live in the Beech Glen community. This is not going to affect Beech Glen. This is going to affect my county. I am proud of the beauty. I am proud of the streams. I am proud of the river. We have built a home that is on the Little Ivory River. It breaks my heart to think that our beautiful French Broad River would become polluted for the sake of a few, for the sake of an industry that is not going to benefit our community. I speak from the heart in saying that to take our community and to see it polluted, to see that the air that we breathe be compromised, is, is just horrifying. And I beg the commissioners, I truly beg you to consider all angles of this topic and to read my letter with the good of our county at heart, and to consider that we as a community and the majority of the people in this room, to consider what I'm asking, that we consider that the asphalt plant, that you work diligently to see that it not be something that be considered and be acted upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Being no other public comment and no other items on the agenda, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you again for attending.
Thank you. Thank you, brother. All right. Check. We call Ms. 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 Ms.